How you doing? How is everyone doing today? We are live. Alright, Blackson is here again. Alright. Well, hello, 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 and welcome to the Roland's Reviews YouTube channel. Mr. Blackson, how are you doing, sir?
How you doing, Ms. Roland? I'm doing good, doing good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Sun is out, I love it, I love it.
So you enjoying the sun?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, I always enjoy the sun, especially when they had all this rain. You know, I'm not a rain person. Some people get happy, "Oh, we need rain." I'm not that. You know, I grew up in California in the desert, so I'm not one to rejoice when it rains, yeah.
Alright, well, we had some rain. I rejoiced because we needed it. Oh, we were dry. They are filling up the chat room. As you fill up the chat room, if you will, please, please, please do us one small favor. Hit that little thumb, that is the like button. That will tell YouTube that you are enjoying this content, and that will trigger the logarithm so that more people will come into the conversation. I will do our roll call momentarily. Look at the topic. Are you familiar with this topic? Tell me in the comments. Excuse me, section, what your thoughts are. Let me move this out. Okay, there we go. Tell me what your thoughts are, what your concerns are. We've been talking, and you know, we've had Ms. Prosperity on the show several times. I have spoken on the telephone with her this morning, and I congratulated her for all of the hard work that she put in, and that's why they have the result that I'll be sharing with you. How you doing? Okay, let me go ahead and do roll call. Some of you have not spoken or sent any emojis. If you'd like your name called during roll call, please do that at this time, and then we are going to start the show. We don't want to be on terribly long because we do plan to come on later as well. As I told you last night, we have a lot of content that we need to share with you and unpack. Alright, I will go ahead and start the roll call. Citizen Kane, Brooklyn, how are you? Brooklyn's back, alright. Alley Cat, Isaiah, Team Hazard, so glad, and there's several other people here, but I don't know who you are because you did not type anything yet. But we're still glad to have you, okay? Brooklyn says, "Blackson, you scared the heck out of me reading while driving, and it was particularly interesting when you spoke about Kennedy's body mass and then said I need to clean my windshield." Okay, that's for you, Blackson.
Oh, I was in the quarry. You know, driving in the quarry is different than driving on the road.
Yeah, yeah, so it does. Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, quarry, quarries, if y'all ever been in a quarry, quarries are open, it's hard to describe. It's not like driving on the...
Not on the regular road, okay.
No, 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 so I can bend over, read stuff, and I can... Yeah, because it's nobody, it's just open, it's, yeah, quarries is open, so I don't know.
Okay, so there's no need for anyone to be frightened. You're okay.
Yeah, 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 most of the time when I'm doing shows and I'm driving, I'm in the quarry. I'm in the quarry, y'all, so don't, yeah, don't trip.
Okay, alright. Brooklyn, I hope that helps you feel better, love. Team Hazard said, "We need rain in New Jersey, state has crazy wildfires." Brooklyn said, "Thank God." Alright, so you just calmed Brooklyn's nerves, okay?
Okay, good.
That's, hey, that's what we're here for, love. Alright, look at the title and tell me, type it in the comment section. Tell me what you think. Now, look at the title. It says, "Woke Chicago Mayor Anger With Trump." And we know he's not the only one. We've had several liberal mayors say they will not cooperate with Trump, they will not allow them to beat for it, people from their sanctuary city, even though the sanctuary cities are imploding. And so, again, folks, that thought process should let you know they are not there for you. The last time I checked, the illegals did not vote those mayors in office. You did. You are their constituents, but you see who their concern is about. Alright, so, Chubbs, how are you doing, love? Steve Fryer is also here. Alley Cat said, "I think Johnson's about to meet his proverbial maker." Yes.
Yeah.
Woo, he's in some dangerous territory. Okay, so, let me go on, and I have several clips to share with you. So, and like I said, I talked to Prosperity on the phone this morning, and she was just ecstatic. She's watching now, and I told her how proud I was and how happy I was for their victory. But again, and I told her I want her to come on the show and speak with all of you, and the, hey, the battle is continuing, folks. It's not over.
Yeah.
She still has to go down there. Blackson, you know, we've been talking about it.
Yeah.
What do you think about this victory? What do you think about this victory that they have?
No, the victory is good, but like you said, when it comes to the Democrats, you have to totally eradicate them because they are like, yeah, they're like, like a bad, like black mold. They just keep, you know, you got the, ooh, you got to really, really, really eradicate them, and that's what, you know, I mean, y'all see what Trump is going through now, you know, he's already battled the Democrats, now he gotta battle the dang Rinnels. It just seems like it never ends, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Alley Cat said, "Prosperity knocked it out of the park," and she did. And this is historic, folks, the woke Chicago mayor, I'm so, oh, I'm just ecstatic. He was humiliated by his own city council. So you see, he's just, you know, he's just adamant. You see who he supports, and his loyalties are not with Chicago citizens, it is with illegals. And this was an, folks, this was unprecedented, unprecedented. Orkin Man. Alley Cat said, "Orkin Man is here." Just spray them like cockroaches.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The vote was 50 to 0, folks, 50 to 0.
50 to 0, yeah.
Tell me what you think about it in the comments. This is unheard, this, yeah. So, you see what your city council, how you doing, Devil's Advocate? "We're having a great day, we hope that you are as well." Whyher, thank you for joining us as well. So, if your constituents, your residents are telling you they don't want this, your city council is agreeing with your residents, your constituents, you're still, you're standing over here alone, but you're so stubborn and bullheaded, you're like, "I'm not changing." This was a strike. Remember, folks, we talked about when Prosperity came on here last time. They were proposing a $300 million property tax increase, and we know why. Citizen Kane, how are you? And so, what caused this deficit? I think I forgot. Someone type it in the comment section. Why are they in such a hole? What caused the problem from the start? Type it in the comment section. I'm having a moment, I forgot. Oh my God. What do you think about this, Blackson? You know what caused the problem.
Well, didn't the overflow of migrants cause the problem?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, the sanctuary cities caused the problem.
Yeah, it was the illegal. You were a sanctuary city, you allowed this to destroy you, okay? The Democrats still don't get it, when you put Americans behind illegals so that illegals are number one. Again, I said, this past election was a referendum from the American people.
Right.
And the Democrats still don't get it, which is good for America. They lost the White House, the Senate, the House, so figure it out. Sky Queen, geez, I wonder what happened? Sky Queen, you know what happened? Oh my God. I like, I love that, Sky Queen. And Alley Cat told us, which we all know, especially those that have been here on the channel, we lost, uh, uh, Blackson, I guess he'll be back. And so, hello, Whyher, how are you doing, love? And so, what a piece of garbage. Americans on the back burner, illegals get everything, Americans get nothing. Make it make sense. And for those that don't know, I will tell you now, when Brandon Johnson was running for mayor, and remember, they were talking about how horrible Beetlejuice, Lori Lightfoot, was. Sometimes you get something and it's worse than what you had. Alright, so let me, I'm gonna go ahead and start sharing my screen here. Where are we? Chicago, we'll share this first. I'm also going to share one of Prosperity's videos. Alright, and I'll pause this until we get this pulled back up. Alright, I hope everyone can see that. "Chicago City Council Rejects Property Tax Hike 50 to 0." That's never happened. Alright, "Chicago is billions of dollars in debt due to the migrant crisis." Alley Cat said, "Poor Beetlejuice." Oh, you said, "No, it's Kelly Rowland, oh, Lord." How is that sanctuary city status working out for you? It's not. So, you're going to punish the residents of Chicago who are telling you they don't want it, and folks, uh, let's be transparent, we know what this is about. You raise these property taxes on people, and then they can't afford to pay property taxes. The city takes over your property, that's, that's how it goes. I just dropped a truth bomb, okay? So, let's look at this, and then I have Prosperity. Prosperity, if you're here, please drop your channel link. Prosperity did a video yesterday, and I'll be sharing that with you as well. I am so proud for that victory. Alright, so let me play this for you.
As the city's budget battle heated up today, Aldermen overwhelmingly voted down the mayor's $300 million property tax increase.
The final tally here, 50 to 0. So what now? NBC5's Natalie Martinez looks at how the city is planning to fill this massive budget deficit before December 31st.
Chicago's mayor appearing confident this afternoon despite a rare unanimous vote by the city's 50 aldermen, a vehement and largely symbolic no to his proposed $300 million property tax hike.
This matter has been voted down.
Calling himself the collaborator in chief, he announced that he'll negotiate details of the budget but not his values.
Making sure that we're not cutting services, making sure that we are responding to the structural damage that I inherited, while also making critical investments.
It's a devastating loss for Mayor Johnson. I've been here, you know, going on 17 years, I've never seen this kind of vote.
You're watching the council become more independent.
Without specifics on what other revenue he would allow, the mayor said that at its core, the budget has to ensure progressive revenue sources while upholding pensions and workers of Chicago.
You only can tax so many things in Chicago.
After today's special meeting, a group of aldermen filed a $15 million budget amendment with the city clerk to include gunshot detection technology in next year's budget. It's meant to reinstate tech, whether it's ShotSpotter again or something else.
It's in the budget. We want to make sure that residents are safe.
The budget, also the topic at Malcolm X College tonight for the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability, who reviews and recommends changes to the 2025 CPD budget before city council votes to approve it.
Everything that is in the budget right now is probably going to change, so I will be presenting on what is in the budget that was put before council earlier in the month.
The state's attorney general sent a letter to the mayor asking him to reconsider proposed cuts to CPD, which would affect the consent decree and put the city at risk of being held in contempt. At City Hall, Natalie Martinez, NBC5 News.
Thanks to Natalie.
And so, that's where we are with that, folks. I'll stop sharing that. And again, Mayor Brandon Johnson placing and supporting illegals, over-supporting Chicago citizens is totally, totally unacceptable, folks. Alright, I have something, how you doing? She Who Walks In The Word, Prosperity finally got a signal. Hi, drop your channel link. We're getting ready to share your video. We are rejoicing with you in your victory, but we, as I just shared with everyone, it is not over. Alright, alright, we are still, where are we here? Alright, let me see, I'm gonna get your, I'm gonna put your video up next. Here we go. Alright, okay, I think Blackson's trying to come back in. Let me see if I can get him in. There, he's back, okay. How you doing, Blackson?
Hey, I'm doing good, doing good.
Um, I just played a short clip. Now, we're going to play the video from Ms. Prosperity's channel, and I am so, so ecstatic. I told her that that video, their victory is on several YouTube channels, and so thank God, people are supporting Chicago, because again, don't look at it as if, "Oh, that's not happening to me." We must support them and be cognizant that it can also happen to you. Alright, let's see what is going on, and that's, again, rejoice in their victory. Here we go.
We still have alders in office who are rubber stamped for Rahm Emanuel, who ruled carte blanche. They let him close black schools and fire black teachers, which led to a $9.25 million settlement. There was no request to meet with the school board, which he appointed. No, no questioning of the CEO. Ballas was allowed to take on payday bond loans to between $650 million. Chief Administrator David Battal issued $1 billion in toxic swaps. I partly blame Obama for endorsing Rahm in the first place and other Dems like Dick Durbin, who endorsed reelection even after he boxed the Laquan Donalds in.
I hope you heard what she said and the damage that Barack Obama is continuing to cause by the people that he appointed. I'll continue.
But Axar Rock, Kid Rock, for recommending Rahm to DNC too. Where were the alders who said nothing while Rahm Emanuel screwed students, teachers, and principals over, especially in the black community? Since Mayor Washington, we finally have a mayor who wants to fully fund public schools and pensions, but now there's issues, there's resistance. He and CTU went to Springfield in May to try and get the state to pay the $1 billion it owes to avoid raising property taxes. This mayor decided to forego a raise, but the alders who co-signed Rahm Emanuel's actions aren't doing that. Are y'all's pensions fully funded? How about firemen, policemen? All city and municipal employees should have their pensions fully funded, including CTU. I read the last property tax hike was under Rahm Emanuel, and those alders who are still here voted for it. This mayor is trying to take care of the city's employees, not demanding CPS take out a high interest loan anymore. Some of you have your six-figure incomes, raises, benefits, and pensions, want to let other employees lose their jobs. The double standard is disgraceful. Those who are fine with mismanaging CPS and demonizing CTU, which is member-led, for fighting to give all students resources they deserve, and you're co-signing their pensions not be fully funded, ripping them off. You should be ashamed of yourself, being independent now under Johnson, but not then under Rahm. Do the tiffs or whatever, but start fully funding pensions that teachers and staff earn. Thank you.
She's gonna get them now.
I'm gonna start off talking about the budget and the real estate and all these things, and I'm gonna get it out in three minutes. 14% rating is what you appear to have Brandon Johnson across the United States, or how they see you. But 14% rating. Now, I'm gonna talk about all your, those known donations of $11.5 million that came from places like the CTU, the SEIU, the American Federation of Teachers, Illinois Federal Federation of Teachers, and if someone got the nerve to get on there and talk about cutting their pensions, what about our real estate? Because, see, we paid for these properties for a purpose and not for you to go touching it with $300 million that you want to siphon out of the citizens' pockets. Get rid of the illegals and try to take your money right back. Started off with that. Now, let's go to, a lot of the people here, these aldermen. We had 31 aldermen, and we got one that's playing on the fence about protecting the citizens and their real estate and these property tax increases. But let's also talk about these aldermen that we know that's getting money from the CTU since 2009. Oh, yeah, I'm bringing the facts. The facts is only what I'm gonna talk about. And let's also talk about the five aldermen not supporting the citizens, but also are not supporting and receiving money from CTU as well. So, you five, you know who you are, and so do I. Right in my hand. Let's talk about the 4.1% increase of salary for 2025, starting from $123,000 to $152,000. So, I mean, this is all public information. It's not like it's something that's hidden. So, because us as citizens, we need to know what's going on, because all of you all are mini-mayors, and the mini-mayors are responsible for the citizens within your ward. You are accountable, not just responsible, to be able to speak up on our behalf and not sit here weak and not stand up for us. But the 31 that has stood up, thank you. For the one that's riding the fence, who don't want to sign the letter, but says that he's not gonna vote for this, half thank you. Because a man gonna stand up, and we know who all of you are, because again, it's in my hands. So, don't think you're not known, because this is public. So, when you collecting money from somewhere, just know that people like me, research, find out, and expose. Speak up for your citizens.
Shots fired. Did she not spit facts? And she has receipts, and I'm not done with this video, but I have to get, you know what my review is, because I've been laughing and hitting the truth box. What do you think about that, Blackson, so far?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as you see, Prosperity came with all the receipts. I guess they weren't prepared for that. See, they just think, you know, you're supposed to go along and get along. No, they, them times are over, and that's what the Democrats always, I guess, try to mistaken the people as being voters, that we're just gonna keep putting up and just, "Oh, you know, like you say, just shut up and vote, just shut up and vote." But no, them days are over with.
Oh my God. Okay, and again, Prosperity already dropped her link. If you enjoyed that fire, click, just scroll up. Click on that link, subscribe to her channel, because she, hey, she will not let them off the hook. She keeps her foot on their necks every time she goes up to speak, and I love it. Don't let them off the hook. Alright, I'll continue.
Can't hear you.
You need to stop.
Can you hear? He has his little muffled voice, and Prosperity's in the background. This, I love it. She will not let it go. I love it. Hit the like button if you're enjoying this content. Share this stream out, folks, this is good.
See, he's the one on the list that wants us to get our taxes approved. No, he's the head of the march.
So, the previous question of calling the question, the motion rather, is not debated. So, with that, all of the favors called in question, signify by saying aye. Do you vote aye? In the opinion of Chairman Ayesha? Chair recognizes this call, then? Thank you, Mr. President, and I would ask for roll call, very well. So, there's motion for this ordinance to be completed with a roll call vote. So, with that, members, please do the e-ball application to report your vote at this time. You have a vote?
The voting begins to squash the $300 million property tax increase. Now, again, folks, who does this to their citizens? Who does this to their constituents who voted to place them in office? I mean, maybe I'm slow and don't understand how things work. If you understand it, tell me in the comment section. This is totally, thank you, Florida, for your approval, dear. This makes no sense. And those of you who've been here on the channel for a while, I wanted to say this. Sometimes people drop into the chat and say, just, you know, nonchalantly or flippantly, "You voted for this." Prosperity has not voted, she's been voting Republicans for several, several years. If you want to go back and check out the videos, the prior videos that I've done with her. So, she didn't vote for this, but she's suffering because of other people. So, those who may be new to the channel, I wanted to go ahead and put that out there. She did not. She's been voting conservatively for years. She's just suffering. Prosperity said, "I have a horrible signal out here." No problem, Prosperity, we're sharing, we're talking about your video and sharing it, so you're fine, dear. And so, don't put everyone in Chicago for my new people. I just wanted to let you know, there are a lot of people in Chicago who vote for conservatives, but they're surrounded. And so, her plight is just unfortunate because of where she lives. And so, let me continue. So, I guess as the voting is going on, that's what you see that's up on the screen now. She Who Walks In The Word, amen, I saw your video from earlier this year, it was absolutely awesome. Yeah, She Who Walks In The Word, Ms. Prosperity's been on here, how many times? Maybe three or four? And I talked to her this morning on the telephone, and I told her, as soon as she can work it into her schedule, I told her, "We want her back. We want to stay informed with someone who is down there." I mean, we can look at videos on Fox News and other channels, but she is there in person. She can give us intricate details, because she's there. It's not secondhand information, it's all firsthand. And so, to me, that's very important as well. I mean, I, you know, I share a lot of Fox News videos, but again, she's there every day telling me things that you don't see on Fox News. And so, welcome to the chat, Magnomaniac. Facts, okay? And so, Dorian, he was in the other a couple of lives ago, Joey. And so, Alley Cat said stupidity is highly contagious and very deadly. And so, the vote, see, when the vote is over, here we go.
It's 47, Lopez, we good. Ignore him. 47, we got. We got you, Lopez.
Actually, it's 49.
Here we go, 50. Hallelujah!
You should resign. You should resign.
Are we good? Are we good? Are we good now? Are we good now? Victory over evil. Thank you, all the people. We appreciate that. Thank you. Because the list showed differently. But we got the facts now. What happened is that they not gonna touch our property tax. We got it. No.
All right now. Go red.
No.
Go red.
That's what we talking about. That's what I'm saying.
Go red.
That's what I'm saying. Got it now, they put some goddamn votes on there, because I'm coming for them seats.
All right.
Salary, salary, salary. Why you playing?
Go red.
Go red.
Go red.
Go red.
Go red.
Make America godly always. Let's make it godly. America's godly, yes. Bring God back in this place. Now, someone, oh, my God. Type it in the comment section, as I give you my review. I love it. And folks, let's be, uh, transparent. If people like Prosperity had not spoken up, we know exactly what would have happened. They would have pushed that, their agenda, right on through. And again, look at the people who probably could not have afforded to pay that property tax. We know then the city would own all of those properties. Those people would have to leave. And then, boom, free homes for the illegals. Blackson, what do you think about this?
Yeah, that's the most devilish, underhanded, you know, plot that's been foiled. Shout out to Prosperity, yeah. So.
She called it. That's evil.
Yeah, this is a blue book of how people need to fight back. Because, yeah, that, that, you know, how many decades have they been doing this to people?
Right.
You know?
And.
How many other cities? How many other cities like California and Houston, you know?
Stand up for themselves. And like I said, for California to be the bluest state, they have an active and soft version of Jim Crow.
Right.
Black people had to leave California. They didn't tell them they couldn't live there, but they priced them out of the market.
They sure did.
Going on everywhere. So, you continue to vote blue, no matter who. This is coming to a city near you. You're being replaced. You are priced out of the market. You can't stay there. And this isn't just for working class, uh, black Ameri- this is Hispanic, white, this is everyone who's working class, who's trying to make- you're being replaced. That's what I, I've been telling you on this channel. Uh, you don't hear me on here just talking about black Americans. No, poor and working class, you're being replaced. And that's why I include, I'm all-inclusive. I include everyone. And people like Prosperity, who are putting in the work. Like you said, she's laying the blueprint.
Yeah, how to fight back, yeah.
I mean, if they had not said anything, they just would have raised the price. And she or other people just, what alternative do you have? And like I told Prosperity, once these people, yeah, if this had gone through, they had lost their homes, wherever they want to live, as high as rent is. Where are you going? You adding, you would be adding to the homeless, uh, population. And we know they won't help homeless Americans. You have to be an illegal to get help. Mark, how are you doing, love? Um.
Yeah, Prosperity, that was some real organizing that you did there.
Prosperity.
Yeah, you gotta break down.
Prosperity.
Yeah, that was, that was historical. That was historic.
And all the people working with you. Um, I love this. Uh, this is what we have to do. Americans need to stand up. Your rights are being taken away every day.
Exactly.
TT, watching from the south side of Chicago, TT, yes. Voting for Trump. TT, hit that like button, hit that subscribe button, love. Share this video out on your various forms of social media. Uh, go ahead and drop your channel link, uh, Blackson.
Okay.
Prosperity, drop your channel link. I'm sending everyone to your channel, to Blackson's channel. We have to continue to get the word out. The fight is just beginning. They will not stop. We have to be relentless. Now, um, again, Mayor Johnson, how you doing, Greg? Prefers to support illegals over supporting Americans who voted him in. Uh, i.e. taxing Chicago residents. And let's go ahead and call it, let's be clear. Where, where I get it? Let's be clear. Let's be transparent. We know why they're having to do that, because of the freaking illegals. You spent all the money, not on American citizens. And you already know what he's saying.
Yeah, Prosperity called him out on that. She called him out. She straight called him out on that. So, yeah, they could.
I already told Prosperity, we know he's already been in the hospital having panic attacks and anxiety attacks. I said, put him back in the hospital. He needs to have some anxiety attacks. He needs to have a panic attack. You don't do this to American citizens. It's evil. It's wrong.
Yep.
And so, what I tell Prosperity, showdown incoming, because he's saying he's not going to work for Trump. Uh, you're, you're a mayor, the president, uh, the president has, uh, every branch of the military behind him. You're going to lose. You're going to have some more attacks. May have a nervous breakdown again. Who knows?
Yep.
You're not going to win this. How you doing, Dave? Dave said, that's our money.
Facts.
American dollars. And that's not right. So, woke, all these woke mayors, so they're gonna do this and they're gonna do that? Uh, you're not going to win. Uh, and all Trump has to do, there's only one thing, how you doing, Pinky? One thing Trump has to do. We already know, particularly these sanctuary cities, they don't have any money. Trump, with the swipe of a pen, cut the money off.
Exactly.
All the problems. They're saying they're not going to do this, and they're not going to do that. News flash, you will succumb to the pressure. Your constituents will suffer if that federal money is not there while you go back to living your beautiful mansion. All right, TT, we need to continue to move on. Recall paperwork. Yes, 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 TT. We're kicked off, blocked on Nextdoor apps for our message. That's okay, TT. Don't stop. Hit that like button, hit that share button, leave a comment. Yes, Prosperity, you are doing God's will. Tom Holman, I did a video on this. He's a wildcat. Um, some people call him a bulldog, but you know, I'm a cat person, so I call him a wildcat. He says, forget sanctuary, uh, city status. We will deport illegals massively. Mass deportation incoming. Eric Adams is being more reasonable. Uh, we know what's gonna happen with him. He's trying to work out his pardon, so he's gonna do what he's told, because he already sees the Democrats have discarded him like garbage. They don't need him anymore. That's why he's under indictment. Uh, so, he will work with Trump. Uh, New York has been bankrupted too. You, there, like I said, with a swipe of the pen, all Trump has to do is say, no federal money. The states can't make it. They need those federal dollars. So, they're out here, word semantics, word salad, saying what they're not, they're not going to work with him, but you will. You will. Um, Dave said, heck, yeah. Partial to the hounds. Okay, devil's advocate. Uh, I have, I've had, I've had cats all my life, but hey, who cares? We both love our little furry friends, right? Um, I mean, dogs are okay. It's just I'm busy and, and cats, they don't require much. And I've had them all my life. Um, She Who Walks in the Word, he and his people use loopholes. Exactly, She Who Walks in the Word. And, uh, Joey, love the lady power. All right. Pinky, Eric Adams never liked that sanctuary city status. He was just doing his job. I know he voted for Trump. Yeah. Hey, he's under indictment. Okay? And so, uh, Magnomaniac, bye-bye. Hey, I'm, I'm on that train. I'm on that Trump train, or that Holman train. So, I have something else to share with you. This is good, good conversation. Tell me what you think. Um, and all, like I said, we're, we're ignoring what he's saying. It's all word semantics, people. Uh, they cannot make it without those federal dollars. So, ignore what he's saying. All right, and here we go. Let me share this with you. Oh, my God, as I'm getting this, preparing this, Blackson, what are your thoughts?
Um, you know, like I said, you know, um, I don't understand why, um, this mayor doesn't stand up the same way Eric Adams stand up. I guess they must have more on the Chicago mayor than they do Eric. Eric Adams said, screw it, I'm, I'm going for it. And he went for it. And so, yeah.
Okay. Border, okay, so here we go. Chicago mayor to push back. Those of you who aren't familiar with this, he's pushing back against the Trump administration and migrant policies. I'll share this with you, but we already know the deal. As soon as there, there's a threat of the money being held back, he's gonna change that to, listen up, folks.
A standoff between so-called sanctuary cities and the incoming Trump administration heating up right here in Chicago. Now, on the campaign trail, Donald Trump promised mass deportations of millions of undocumented migrants. He promised to close the southern border with Mexico and to end birthright citizenship. He's also threatened to withhold funding from sanctuary states. Now, Chicago's mayor vows the city will continue to shield all migrants in spite of Trump's threats.
The incoming administration, um, is not just a threat to Chicago, but a threat to what is sensible about this country. And as mayor of the city of Chicago, we're not gonna bend or break or cower to someone's threat. We're gonna stand up and unite around our shared values, and they have my assurance that I'm gonna protect the families of this city.
All right, so since late 2022, more than 51 million migrants have.
All right, can everyone see these? I'm gonna pause this video to make sure you read it correctly, just in case some people need to grab their spectacles. Um, Chicago migrants, uh, 51,065. $574 million housing, food, and care. And this was, uh, I'm sure there's some, uh, other statistics, but this is what we have for now. Alicia Mack, he is an evil silver black. Yeah. And what did we say before? What did the Democrats do? They put black faces in high places, so you will vote for them.
Right.
Stop it. Stop voting for black faces. What has that got you for 64 years? Nothing. But more, uh, degeneration, okay? More urban blight, more failing schools. It has gotten you nothing of substance, okay? So, stop it. I'll continue.
Come into Chicago, and the city has spent more than $574 million to house, feed, and care for them. So, joining me now is Chicago journalist and host of The Chicago Files, William J. Kelly. William, thank you so much for your time on this. So, we heard from Mayor Brandon Johnson there. How much power does Chicago's mayor really have? If it does come down to a local versus federal standoff?
Chicago's a sanctuary city, but that doesn't mean that the federal government cannot send in ICE agents to remove illegal aliens, especially if they've committed crimes. They just won't have the assistance of Chicago police officers. The people of Chicago that I'm talking to, including black and brown, uh, people, communities, uh, say that they feel that we've been generous enough, uh, with, uh, illegal aliens, that it, that they feel that they've, uh, suffered as a result. And, um, they're hoping that Donald Trump will, in fact, reverse Chicago sanctuary, uh, city, uh, status, and that Chicago's days as a sanctuary city are, are coming to an end.
Yeah, and William, as you put it out there, I mean, being here in the city, there really are so many opinions on this topic. Now, we know that Trump's pick for, for borders are, uh, Tom Holman, has said that he would recommend that federal funds be stripped from cities that don't assist with those federal immigration agents. Happens, William? What could it do for a sanctuary city like Chicago?
Well, as you probably know, uh, Chicago's already a billion or more, uh, in debt.
Did, uh, everyone hear that? He did not say million with an M. He said billion with a B in debt. I said that earlier. What are your thoughts about that, Blackson?
Yeah, it's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And, and like, um, you know, this is how you end inflation. You gotta end the migration, you gotta close the borders. You gotta stop bleeding out the money. This is how you stop inflation.
That's common sense, but he won't do it. That's common sense. Oh, God. Here we go.
Mayor Johnson is getting pushed back at a special city council meeting today on his proposed $300 million property tax increase, which, uh, is, you know, I called it out essentially as a migrant tax, because that's about the, uh, the exact number, uh, to the penny that he's.
Did everyone hear what the true name of this tax should be called? The migrant tax. Okay, so you tax your residents who are already struggling financially to pay for your created migrant crisis. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. I'm just slow, I understand. I only have a half of a brain cell. I'll continue.
Paid out to one, just one of the migrant vendors, uh, the, uh, you know, at the inner Chicago and some of the other, not to mention all the other, um, migrant vendors. So, uh, this is.
Remember, he's talking about all these millions of dollars that have been paid to these vendors. Follow the money trail. Who is benefiting? We talked about these people who own apartment buildings, throwing Americans out, because they're getting millions of dollars, right? Okay.
If Mayor Johnson thinks that he's going to push back on, on Donald Trump's historic mandate to close the border and secure, uh, cities like Chicago, I, I think he's going to find out that that's not gonna work out and very well for him.
You know, and William, there's still so many, so many questions over, you know, how this mass deportation would work, uh, what it would cost. But even if, if Donald Trump does fail to, to fully enforce some of his campaign promises, what could the threat of it happening mean for the immigrant population, both legal and illegal?
Well, you know, I, I think that, uh, this, we are living in some kind of an historic time. Uh, if you study history, you will see that there have been mass deportations at other times in history, including the, you know, United States history. Eisenhower, uh, had, I think, the most, the, at least up until now, the, the greatest mass deportation in American history. So, uh, you know, this is definitely something that's doable if you have a federal government, a president, and, you know, and, and, you know, the, the ICE agents that are eager and willing to do it, which it appears as though that is exactly what we have, uh, in Washington now.
Thanks for watching. Go to join.
All right, so again, I wanted to, um, share that with you. And this is unreal. Now, we said Eric Adams right now, he's being non-committal, but again, when you're under indictment, uh, you make the right choice, because, uh, you don't want to go to jail. So, we, we know where that's headed, and he's talking to Trump, so he's trying to get some things worked out. So, indictments, threat of incarceration, that's gonna help with his decision. He's trying not to attack Trump. So, when people, people are asking him questions, trying to be, get him to be committal, he's not. Prosperity said, yes, 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 yes. Uh, Pinky said, I see governors and mayors being arrested and facing federal charges. Uh, at this point, I do not care. Pinky, I'm with you. Um, but when it comes down to the fact, if they're threatened with going to jail, uh, yeah, they'll step aside. TT, look at downtown, our local communities, 100 years plus businesses are done and closed. Yes.
Yep.
Prosperity said, wait until they get all of Brandon's hidden secrets. Yeah. So, hit that like button, folks, if you're enjoying this content. We're almost to 100. Share this content out. We have got to help. Share this content out. We have got to help get prosperity's message out. We have to let Chicago know we are in consensus. We are in unison with what they are doing. We may not live there, but we are standing, uh, right behind them, supporting them. Um, oh, you, Brooklyn said that Adams was always a terrible man and will always be a terrible man. He does dress well though. Okay. How you doing Melissa? Um, Shanti, they should remove the doors of their fancy houses and let illegal immigrants live with them. Yes. Facts. Uh, Brandon Johnson, bottom line, he's, he has to go. He has to go.
Yep.
Own city council does not agree with him. So again, uh, in my estimation, more panic attacks incoming. Who would continue to do this to their own residents? Oh my God. What the heck? Um, Citizen Kane said, Bill Kelly and, uh, straight traumatized. Okay. I'm not sure of Citizen, what you were saying there. Greg, uh, same in Portland, Oregon boarded up businesses, rampant drug use on the streets, violence galore, tense it. Greg, yes. Oh my God. Um, the alley cat, yeah, they almost destroyed America completely, Biden and Harris. Let's pray, uh, Trump can unravel. He, he'll be okay. It's just going to take some time, people. Uh, he won't be able to fix everything overnight. So we do have to be, give him a little grace and a little time. And, um, he'll do what he can. All right. He has the House. He has the Senate. And so where are we? Allison? Okay. So raising property taxes again on American citizens to fund illegals. Uh, people in Chicago don't agree. Thank God. Uh, prosperity had her receipts. We know who you are. The city council got on board. Uh, and they backed their citizens. Sky queen. He, uh, Elon's going to fire everyone. He probably will. More Chicago residents than ever voted for Trump again. Things are happening in my lifetime, Blackson's lifetime that have never happened before. Uh, like I told you guys, we know it's all about the dollar, dollar bill, y'all. There are all these bankrupt, uh, sanctuary cities. They cannot make it without federal money, cannot. So Blackson, what do you think they're going to do?
Um, I think again, we're preparing for day one. This is what day one looks like when Trump's saying on day one, well, everything's getting in line for day one. That's ICE, that's the migrant funds being cut off in, in, uh, New York. But like, again, Chicago, um, you see things lining up. They see that the writing on the wall. I'm, I'm hoping that the mayor can read the writing on the wall better than Kamala Harris. Cause you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, devil, who said, uh, no, Citizen Kane? Wait a minute. She who walks in the words said taxes are voluntary. Uh, where's that? Uh, she who walks in the word, I wish they were. I wouldn't, uh, especially with the income taxes I pay and property taxes I pay. You don't pay, uh, you know, they put celebrities in jail for not paying their taxes. I wish I did not have to, but I do. Uh, we know, uh, Mayor Brandon Johnson is toned after what his constituents want. I have one more clip to share with you. He's doing his daddy's work, the devil, prosperity. Truth bomb. I, yeah, I have another clip to share with you here. Let me see. Wait a minute, where are we? Is this? Okay. We've shared that. Yeah. I have another clip or two. Uh, yeah, let me share this. Tell me what you think in the comment. How you doing, I N K? Why don't these cities vote to end sanctuary? Uh, I N K. So the, the constituents, the residents want it ended, but you got these bozos in office who the Democrat party has dirt on and they, their constituents clearly don't want it. And they're still going ahead with this losing scenario.
Yeah, Lonnie K, the first thing you gotta do is get rid of all the Democrats. Stop voting blue, no matter who. You gotta get rid of them.
Right. Um, Greg said, wondering if the Chicago's mayor rest was held in 24, would the results be different? Greg, it looks like it would be, um, and particularly the people like prosperity, you know, property owners, people who are really affected. And you're hoping that this will wake everyone else up. Prosperity said, it's not just our vote.
Oh, yeah.
Machines rigged. Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes. And we've already, uh, we did a video on this. When someone votes illegally, there's no way you can take the vote back. It still counts. That's, that's crazy. So everyone watch this clip here. Yes, insane. Here we go.
And it was mentioned that, uh, someone hoped that President Trump addressed you. Uh, how would you address him? And if he offered to be a collaborator in chief, would you receive his extended hand?
Well, first of all, uh, you know, are you tired of playing now Logan?
He got the nerve to laugh.
Uh, he's a
Like the whole country voted for Trump. Like what? Oh my God. He
Yep. And prosperity says, we have a recall drive in place at recallthisfall.com. So do, do it prosperity. They're working on it. Here we go.
It's really difficult, quite frankly, to understand the, I guess, the mindset of someone like the former president, president-elect that would be willing to eliminate the Department of Education. That, that's, that's, that's
That's not what he has.
Tough to even just, um, understand why he would do that. Right? Public education at the expense of the state, after all, is a Negro idea, the words of W E B.
The public schools of America have been failing 50 plus years. For those of you who are new in the chat, I've been an educator in the state of North Carolina for 27 years. It needs to be disbanded.
Yeah, this guy, yeah, this guy is a straight hack. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Prosperity, make sure y'all get rid of this dude, man. Yeah, this dude is a hack.
Ah, here we go.
Beat the boys, right? And so, you know, he, he doesn't believe in science in any formation. And so there's real environmental issues that we have. We restore the Department of the Environment. You know, I, I don't even really know what his full position is, you know, on really growing business in our economy. You know, when he is, you know, insisting on, you know, tariffs that would ultimately cripple, um, local economies like ours. Especially because this is a global economy, right? So his behavior, particularly around even the, the economics, is not going to help make sure that the people of Chicago can afford to buy groceries. And these are very dangerous threats. And then of course, you know, his blatant, um, you know, characterization of the Department of Justice as well as, um, the way new arrivals are, are, and my immigrants are being treated is just, it's just sickening. Look, I'll say this lastly, as, as a black man, why would I cooperate with, with agents that are looking to terrorize people?
Oh, this dude is a hack. This dude is a hack.
Yeah, and
Got to go, yo, prosperity, make sure y'all get rid of this man.
Going back, again, fear mongering, talking about what happened in this country decades, years and years ago, you, man, you still have not answered the question.
No, he didn't answer.
This is what they do. They go back to
Fear monger.
We have fear mongering, uh, everything that happened with slavery. And that's what he's referencing in the Jim Crow era. And what does that have to do with the answer to the question? You, he totally ignored it. Oh.
You know, and so I, I just, here's what I'm recommending to the president. Here's what I recommend to him. That the city of Chicago is the greatest city in the world. He has an opportunity to actually figure out how to unite this country. There are working people in this, in this city that are afraid, scared. How could someone be that comfortable knowing that he is causing that type of fear and terror?
You causing fear and terror with this $300 million property, uh, uh, attack hike. You're the one causing the fear and frustration. So stop it. And, uh, someone just said something in the chat section. Uh, I need to read that. Uh, Mark so, are you kidding me? Shaking my head. He tried to use the black card on black people.
Right, right.
Make it make sense. Okay. We're almost done with this clip.
It can't come from government leadership. That looks a lot like some of the things that I would teach when I was a social studies teacher. And it looks like a really nasty form of government that would isolate people. It's that type of mindset that not only enslaved people, but it sent people to gas chambers.
See? slavery.
So we're going to defend people. We're going to make sure that we're protecting families in this city.
You're protecting families. That's enough of him. You've, you're protecting families, but not American families. Yeah. Hit that like button, folks.
Straight gaslighting.
At a hundred. Yeah. What did the Democrats do? He went back to slavery. Devil, uh, devil's advocate. Exactly. I, I've got to re, I, I need to pin that comment from devil's advocate. So, wait, wait a minute. Here we go. It's pinned, greatest city, no offense, but the crime, jobs and education say otherwise.
Absolutely.
Facts. Facts. What the heck is he saying?
He's just gaslighting. He's straight gaslighting, man. Avoid the, man, this dude, yeah. Yeah, prosperity and got to get rid of his butt. Man, when, when is the dang elections up for this man?
She said it during a recall, uh, she dropped a link. Um,
Yeah, they need that recall.
Yeah, he, oh my God.
This dude's a straight hack.
He's straight. Somebody said, uh, who was said to think he'd be a black man? Yeah, they have dirt on all of these people. All of them.
At least answer the damn question. I mean, god dang.
Oh, yeah, it's not gonna do that. How you doing, Zandra? Hey, you, uh, and, and, and again, everything, everything is for non-American citizens. If you're a citizen, you can get it from that guy. And I had to show you another video where he got nasty with people. They were just asking him a question and he he, where is it? Oh my God. And I was like, okay, now do I still have that? Oh my goodness. Wait a minute. Um, I may have it somewhere. Hold on. What are your thoughts on that? That, that is crazy.
Yeah, he's a hack. He's a straight hack, man. Yeah. I got to recall this man ASAP because he is, man, he's hook, line and sinker with the propaganda. Man.
Yep. Yep.
He did this, I mean, the damn near the whole country voted for Trump and this is his reply? He's still on the gas chambers and slavery. Man, get out of here with that nonsense, man.
Told you. That's what they do. All right. Thank you. Someone just congratulate, uh, who was it? Oh my God, these comments, where are they? Uh, somebody just said congratulations and I wanted to thank him. Um, where are we here? I think it was, um, hold on. Hold on. I wanted to see, I wanted to show you, show him getting nasty with folks. I think it was Citizen Kane. 24 seven with the black card for Brandon Johnson. He's forever hollering about how it's hard out here for a pimp. Woo. Oh my God. Arrogance or ignorance can't pick between the two. Yeah, but you pick one, right? Um, prosperity on your channel. Yeah, she's here. She's just in and out, but she's on the channel. Pinky, uh, someone, whoever just, oh, Agent Orange, good to see you over 9,000. 10,000 should be soon. Keep on rocking. Thank you, Agent Orange. I just flooded the comment section with some hearts from you. Yes, Ally, he is dangerous. The vote videos on YouTube. Drop that link prosperity. Thank you, love. Uh, Brooklyn, I shouldn't give the secret out, but, uh, as a white man, I get free champagne and caviar. Yeah, that's all subscribed to his ideology, right? Said, uh, uh, Brooklyn. Let's listen to him get upset. And again, he does not answer the question and he gets rid of this guy. He's cut him off. Listen to this.
Can't see it, baby. I can't see it. You sharing the screen, Brooklyn?
Did I not share the screen?
No, you didn't share. It's not sharing.
All right. I have to go back. Hold on. Oh my God. Oh boy. This is unreal. Give me a second here. Um, but, uh, BJ is owned by a Chicago teacher. Yes, Citizen Kane. The teachers' union drives everything, uh, as it relates to educate. Yeah, whatever that teacher, those teachers' unions are very, very powerful. I agree. How, Shanti, they never answer and deflect. No, they never answer the question. Um, oh, devil's advocate said, Brock, Brooklyn, pardon me, but do you have any gray coupon you can spare? Yeah, let me get this sheet, uh, screen ready to share with you. Oh my God. You, you can't make this stuff up. Okay, here we go. I think I got it now. Hold on. Let me get this. And then we'll get out of here and make sure you come back. We're going to, uh, go live again. We have got to. Here we go. Okay. All right. How you doing Rebel? Rhymes. Hit that like button. Hit that subscribe button. We're glad you're here. This is for Rebel. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, I can see it now. Yep.
All right. Let's go ahead and get this video up. Let's go ahead. Watch this.
Johnson, your approval rating is at an historic low. Um, Chicagoans are saying that you're a worse mayor than Lori Lightfoot, if you can believe it. Um, your property tax proposal, uh, $300 million property tax increase just got shut down 50 to one. That's gotta be a record. Uh, primarily because Chicagoans felt that this any tax increase that you propose is simply a migrant tax. That that money is going to pay for migrants almost to the penny. Considering your rhetoric, even here today, comparing Donald Trump to Hitler. Um, and, uh, do you really believe that Donald?
Better hurry up and ask the question. Otherwise your arm gonna get real tired. Hurry up.
No, I'm good.
Well, we're not, so hurry up.
Right. Well, Mayor, uh, considering your Donald Trump, his, uh, his borders are, uh, Homan has already said
You're about to get that mic passed. You gotta ask the question, sir. You're wasting people's time.
Well, you know,
Just ask the question.
People on
Okay, so check this out. If you don't ask your question, we're gonna move on to somebody else.
You're interrupting my question is what?
You haven't asked it.
Difficult.
Can we move on to the next person? Neff Sahi? Thank you.
They're saying that they're going to double down on sanctuary cities like Chicago due to your rhetoric. Um, you don't, you're a billion dollars.
Okay, I've had enough of this. You, you have to learn
Wow.
Yourself and asking articulate question. Here's how we're going to balance our budget. Thank you. I've heard your question. You know what? Let's, let's think, take this mic from this person here.
Yeah, this dude is a hack.
And that's pretty much, so I wanted you to see that. He didn't want to hear, he kept interrupting the guy. He didn't want to, he wasn't going to answer the question anyway. He didn't have to interrupt him. We, we know how he operates. Prosperity deals with, uh, this guy all the time. So he had no intention. And then when the guy's talking about his approval rating being, uh, uh, lower than Lori Lightfoot Beetlejuice, if that's possible. I guess he was like, I, I'm not taking this. Panic attack, anxiety attack incoming. All right, LaRita said, somebody's angry. Yeah. He didn't want, he didn't want that smoke. And so that's what they do. They don't answer the question. Shanti said he's had enough.
Yeah.
No, we have not had enough, Shanti. Woo, CJ Parks, how you doing? Hello to my favorite Americans. Hope everyone's doing great. Wonderful day to the residents of Chicago for that $300 billion type, uh, tax, tax hike strike down. Woo. Yes, he was rude. Prosperity, I guess he lost it. He got his panties in a bunch when he said, uh, talking about how low his approval rating was and that it be, it was lower than Lori Lightfoot's. He, he got his panties in a bunch real bad. What do you think about it? Blackson, what's your review?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Yeah, I mean, you know, um, yeah, he don't want to answer them questions. Yeah.
Suave, maybe I shouldn't think this, but there is a part of me that believes that Chicago deserves this. When you vote nearly 100 years for failure, this is what you get. You woke up too late. Okay, now, I have some people who live in Chicago. Would you like to respond to that? Um, hit that like button, Suave. Because now, Suave, I think you just dropped in, dear. What about all of the Chicago residents, like Prosperity, for instance, who has been voting conservatively for years, but she is surrounded by people who vote blue no matter who, and Chicago cheats. They don't even have voter ID. And Suave, you know, there were instances of illegals who voted. And once they voted, even though it was done illegally, those ballots can't be rescinded. What are your thoughts about that? So, Prosperity, uh, tell us what you think to answer Suave's question there or statement. Suave, uh, what are your thoughts about the people who live in Chicago but who vote conservatively? Yes, it talked about rigged machines. I did a video almost a year ago on people who live in Chicago. And they told us about all the cheating that's taking place, that has taken place historically in Chicago. Right, Prosperity? Citizen Kane, I bet it's ultra humble pardon. Harold, Harold Washington wasn't part of 100 years of failure. Okay? Prosperity, what do you think about Suave's question? Because you've been voting conservatively. But you're suffering from the people who voted blue no matter who, even though you did not vote blue.
Well, I would ask Suave, where does he get his information from, number one?
Right.
You know, I, I get it, Suave, you're probably just assuming based on what the media tells you that, you know, that everybody's down with blue, well, blue no matter who. And that, you know, but like I said, like, like Prosperity has told us, they don't ask for ID.
No.
Machines are rigged. I mean, it's a lot of corruption going on in that state.
Pieces here.
Uh huh, yeah.
Prosperity said, no, the fact, so, well, and that's why I, I, um, I said that earlier, Suave, before you came in. A lot of people come to the chat and they have a nonchalant attitude like Chicago deserves this because they've been voting blue 100 years. But what about the people who have not been voting blue, but they're still suffering, Suave? Um, Suave, if you're still here, let us know what your thoughts are, love. Um, another great show. Hit the like button and share, subscribe. Thank you, Chubs. Like, you, you know, me here in North Carolina. I've never understood how this state votes Republican a lot, but the governor, they love to vote for Democratic governors. Now, we have Josh Stein. I didn't vote for him, but I may suffer as a result of his policies.
Yeah, you know, Georgia's done that strange thing, too. We've had like Democratic governors. I never understand that either.
Um, and, and so Prosperity is saying clap back now. I don't know if um, Suave dropped in and now they're gone, but Prosperity, uh, Suave has not responded, love. So Allison is a mess. Allison, uh, Roland, the truth is Johnson needs some serious physical releases. I really do believe he has a deadly case of blue ball.
No, Suave, Suave says Chicago has been under Democratic rule for almost a century. That's not an assumption. What have the people done about this over the span? There has to be the same level of accountability. So um, I can answer that, Suave. So, Suave, um, you know, we, uh, stay, uh, subscribed because we're gonna get the numbers. I'm calling it now, 32% of black people voted for Trump. They talk about the Hispanics was a high percent. I think they said Hispanics was over, damn, I can't forget. It was a high amount of numbers, but
I know a show on all those numbers. We will.
Right, right. We're gonna do a show on that, but I say that to say this, you know, we need, we need voter ID. We need, uh, paper ballots, everything that Trump is saying. So that'll eradicate all that. That way people are not, oh, guessing and, oh, well, you know, making assumptions and all that. We all need a voter ID, which Chicago did not have, and Prosperity is a witness to that.
Yeah.
And in order to, uh, like I said, even the playing field across the country, we, we gotta have these things in play. I mean, I, I know you for voter ID, Suave. I know you for that. And I know you for paper ballots.
Right, and Suave, yeah, thank you. Uh, you're right, Blackson. Suave, Prosperity is actually there on the front lines. She lives in Chicago. She's at the city council meetings. And again, she hasn't been voting for Democrats. There are black Americans who live in Chicago who are conservative, but they are suffering as a result of their counterparts who live there and who vote blue no matter who. So what should happen to the, what about the people who don't vote for Democrats? And they're suffering. What would be your solution for that? We're just trying to find a solution. Prosperity said they don't know what is actually happening. Okay? Midnight, how you doing, love? Midnight says move. Okay, midnight, but I know for some people that may not be possible. A lot of people have deep roots there. Lamont, how are you? Lamont said they need to send Wedgehead and Fred Flintstone packing. Also, you know, he's talking about Mayor, uh, Brandon Johnson and the Governor Pritzker. Woo. How you doing? Hit the like button. Hit the share button. Hit the subscribe button. Midnight, so glad you're here. Um, someone give me a solution before we go.
Well, like I said, we need to start with voter ID and
That would help. Yeah, yeah.
Trump Force 47 needs to get down to Chicago. Again, Prosperity, I don't know what you gotta do, but you need to get Alina Haba down there. You need to get Trump Force down there. Y'all need to get down there. Elon Musk down there and, and overhaul them machines, do what you gotta do, because this, yeah. And I understand it's easier said than done, but yeah, we got the, you got the petition Trump got to, because it, it sounds like, yeah, the, the corruption is embedded in Chicago. Yeah.
They haven't had a Republican mayor since 1931. I did a video on that. So it's deep. And they put black faces in high places to get black Americans to vote for them. But, uh, Suave, you never answered my question. What should happen to black Americans who do not vote for Democrats, but they're suffering as a result of other Chicagoans who vote for them? Lamont, start taking care of each other. Get back to our family structure back. We can't run. We have to fight. Okay. Lamont, stay there and fight.
Well, Lamont, the only one that believes in family structure is MAGA. The, the Democrats don't believe it. They don't even know what a woman is, so.
Right, right. Exactly. Prosperity, Suave, I am only one person, but doing what is possible to make a difference and know the facts. These channels block the facts and claim misinformation. She definitely has a point there. I learned the hard way. When you're, uh, Suave, lots of times when we're trying to share facts, YT blocks the video.
Yeah.
Suave said, uh, is it corruption or apathy from the people? Suave.
It's corruption.
Hey, Chicago politics, oh, my God. You can find it here on YouTube or anywhere. They're well-known for their corruption. Well-known. Why her? Why do we have to move? That's not the solution every time we face a problem. Okay, why her? That's, that's, okay, I agree. Um. Where are we? Oh, they're, oh, they're coming up with some excellent, uh, info. We, uh, we need us. No one is coming to say, right. Uh, Lamont, and Lamont, like I said, a lot of people have deep ties. When black Americans started moving to Chicago during the Great Migration for better jobs and opportunities, a lot of people, they don't want to leave because there are several generations uh, uh, of their family that lived, uh, in Chicago. So, um, that could be an issue. Lamont said they are all crooks. Yes, black, white, Hispanic, uh, Chicago is known for their crooked politics. They're all bought and paid for by the Democratic Party. And Chub says, if you vote blue, you have the blues for sure. Oh.
Woo. Get one.
Yeah, Lamont said they're all crooks. But what they do, uh, in the precinct, the precincts that are high, you know, a high percentage of black Americans, they put those black faces in high places and they do nothing for you. All they do is, uh, continue to destroy the black community with their policy. We're talking again, policy, policy, policy. They're put there not to help you. They're put there to help and to continue to destroy your community. We need to get educated on policy and go to city council meetings, call Alderman, get involved, read this. TT, that's, yeah, that's what Prosperity is doing. She's there on the front lines. Yes. Oh, yeah, there is a lag, Prosperity. Yeah, there is. Facts don't care about feelings. Fact.
Midnight said, look how Kamala just throws money at things. What a mess. Yeah, we did show that on that yesterday, Midnight, on her billion-dollar celebrity spending spree, how she just went crazy. And now she's $20 million in debt.
Right. Midnight, uh, all of you, TT, uh, Sea Fryer, Lamont, go check out the video, Suave. Go check out the video that Blackson and I did last night. We talk about a lot of this corruption.
Yep.
Uh, Midnight says mass psychosis. Oh, yeah. Jesse, how are you? Peace to you as well. TT, we have gotten very lazy with our politics and these newcomers are here to take. Uh, yes, we have. Wait, people are waking up now. Ooh, Lamont said, how about our maker is showing us how much we need each other, all skinfolk and kinfolk. Okay, Lamont, okay. All right. Um, news break is another one. I have the facts for blocking on my channel. Okay. Prosperity? All right, where are we here? Notice, um, the mayor looks like Woody on Sanford and Son. Oh, my God, we're talking Sanford and Son. Alley Cat, do they not understand blacks have been able to self-think for years? Uh, that's true, Alley Cat. CJ, praying that Trump's Attorney General, uh, Matt Gaetz, will investigate and prosecute Brandon Johnson and his cronies. It's only me. How you doing? That's okay. You can go back. Um, CJ Parks, as I stated earlier, they're doing all this, uh, talk, this word salad, this, uh, wordplay. When the troops come in, they will relent. They, they, they will, they'll go away. They're not going up against the military and you, you can't go against the president. He has a military. Uh, he will step aside. And then the Democrats will be done with him and they'll probably air his dirty laundry, too. Yes, Lamont, he's not even from America, from what I was told. His family is not. Um. Prosperity said, any other Chicagoans on this chat besides Citizen Kane and Lamont? Alley Cat said he looks like Black Bart Simpson. It's only me. We're glad you are here. All right. So we're pretty much done. Um, we're going to get off now. And we'll be back on later with another video. So go grab something to eat. Relax. How you doing, Black Sit? Uh, Brandon Johnson is from America. His, uh, grandmother is from Cabrini Green. Um, okay, Black Sit. Miss Rollin has 114 likes. Let's keep them going. Thank you, Chubs. Uh, we're gonna go live. What time is it now? Two, two, what time you wanna go live? About five or six?
Uh, Yeah, so, yeah, five o'clock's good. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, five o'clock. Uh, we'll go live again. Uh, Prosperity said illegals got to go. Yeah, so we'll get off now and come back on at five. I had a wonderful time, too, Brooklyn. Check out the videos that we did. We did one video yesterday. We did videos last week. Check them out, folks, and hit that like button for us. Uh, Suave, black America needs to be reeducated regarding politics, especially at the local level. Suave, you have a point. Yeah, we, we definitely, we gotta do better in that, uh, category. Um, and learning how to create leverage to force politicians to act on their behalf. Yeah. Uh, I agree with that. Chicago, why her? Chicago's in the house? Yes. Make sure you come back later. What we say, five o'clock? We'll come back on it. All right. And think of some questions that you may have for Blackson as well as myself. Uh, keep fighting. Chicago, we are on your side. We are in consensus with what you're doing and we're all in unison with what you're doing. Um, having these conversations would get us where we need to go. Right, Lamont? And all of you who are here, share this stream out on your various forms of social media. We can, we have to stand with Chicago, as I stated. Don't stand and sit back and watch and say, oh, it sucks to live in Chicago. No, this will come to a city near you. We cannot afford to ignore Chicago because we don't live in Chicago. Standing together in unison is what works. Blacks, and what are your parting shots?
Yeah, the migrants, they don't stay in migrant cities. They, they spread out.
Right. Running now because Trump is on the way. They're gonna, they're already starting to leave and scatter. Yes. Jacqueline, how are you, love? We're, we're leaving now, but we'll be back on at 5:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Black Sit, Chicago was great up until just about four years ago. Black Sit, yes. Yes. Black Sit and Jackie, go back, please. And I shared a lot of clips and we've had an excellent conversation. Sing us a Going to Fire song, um, a Going to Fire song, Chubs. Um, okay, I'll sing you my Dolly Parton song from 1980. Because that's what I've been doing, preparing these lives, right, Blackson? Uh, it takes time for us to get together and prepare these for you. So guess what we've been doing? Working nine to five. What a way to make a living, barely getting by. It's all taking and no giving. They just use your mind and you never get the credit. It's enough to drive you crazy if you let it. Yes, I love Dolly Parton, too. Hope my singing didn't hurt your ears too bad. Prosperity, I enjoyed you all and absolutely appreciate all your support, stay in, uh, faith that God's will be done. Yes, we love you. Thank you for being here. Meet us back here at 5:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. You know where I'm going right now. I'm going straight to the comment section. I'll be there as long as you are. Thank you again for spending your very valuable time here at the Rollers Reviews YouTube channel. We'll see you in the comment section.